Anyone that would like to come and speak on any issue that's not on the agenda tonight? If you're here to talk about an issue that's on the agenda during the public hearing process, for that application, we ask you to wait and come up and talk then. But on any issue that you would like to come and speak, go ahead and open the citizen forum now for anyone that would like to come up. Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and... Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Board members. Don Haight, Stevensburg District. Get back to nature, support Culpeper forums. Dictatorship, quote, "A dictatorship is a government or a social situation where one or several people make up all the rules and decisions without input from anybody else." Dictatorship implies absolute power, end quote. Well, is that what we have here in Culpeper? That's a good question. A government body that wants to carry out their own personal agendas and not comply with the wishes of the people. Do we actually have members that feel that they aren't required to communicate with the taxpayers that pay their salaries? That's called taxation without representation. This county went through... This country went through that once already. Once again, communication was requested by taxpaying residents, and once again, their supervisors refused to respond. So now I'm asking the community for its help. How do we get our elected officials to communicate with us? We need each board member to hold a town hall meeting individually so we can ask questions and give input as it relates to our county. We need town hall meetings so that we can have our questions answered and receive feedback at the same time, not the silent treatment. Myself and a group of individuals are willing to donate $1,000 per board member towards the overhead cost for each of them in their town hall meetings, no strings attached. So far, Susan G. is the only board member with the courage to hold a town hall meeting. It was about six months ago. It was well received, well attended, it was professional and productive, lots of good questions, and many well-received answers. And I wanted to thank Susan G. for being a leader in doing so. Culpeper residents are requesting that all board members follow her example. This is Susan G.'s first term, and right out of the gate, she has proven to be a leader. We hope she will do another one soon. If you want our board members to host a town hall meeting, please contact them, or better yet, call the county and make the request. The phone number is 540-727-3427. They would love to hear from you. Remember, it is your taxpaying dollars. Residents of Culpeper, it's time for you to wake up. It's time to get involved, and it's time to speak up, and it's time to demand straight answers. The bottom line is that Culpeper County residents have legitimate questions that should be answered and not ignored. A town hall meeting is the quickest and most accurate way to do this. You get the answer straight from the source and not secondhand. Culpeper residents, if you love this county and don't want to be destroyed and... Don't want it to be destroyed, I strongly advise that you get involved now before it's too late. I hope the board of supervisors aren't afraid to hold town hall meetings. Again, please make a phone call to 540-727-3427 and request our board of supervisors to hold a town hall meeting. May Culpeper continue to be progressive, and may Culpeper be the positive place to raise a family. May Culpeper great again. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else would like to come and speak? Okay, close the citizen forum, move on to the agenda. Any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight or entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, we have no items for general county business this evening. We have one item for planning commission business that's not subject to a public hearing. And the Board of Supervisors will consider the findings made by the Planning Commission on June 14th, 2023 regarding the general location or approximate location, character, and extent of the proposed solar generation facility, North Ridge. I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Sam McLaren, our Planning Commission Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to the board. Yes, this is a little unusual. Most of your planning commission business is subject to a public hearing, and actually, this particular item, North Ridge Culpeper Solar Utility Scale Solar Facility Request, is kind of broken into a couple of different items on your agenda. The first is an appeal, actually, to a planning commission finding in accordance with 15.22232 subsection A of the Code of Virginia, which is a substantial accord finding with the comprehensive plan. And, Mr. Chairman, what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the letter from the Planning Commission into the record. The applicant has prepared an appeal application that's been properly submitted and put on notice. That has been posted on board docs. The applicant has also submitted the reasons why they believe the planning commission is in error of that finding, that this project is not substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan. This is a letter from the Planning Commission in regard to this particular proposal. The Board of Supervisors will consider a request by North Ridge Culpeper Solar, Ken Neiman, for a conditional use permit to operate a utility scale solar facility in accordance with Article 17-7 Standards and Procedures for Renewable Energy Generation Utility Scale Solar Facilities and Article 3-2-2.18 in the zoning ordinance. The property is off of Route 3 in the Stevensburg District. The applicant seeks to construct and operate a 26-megawatt project on approximately 355 acres, of which 252 acres is proposed to be panel and equipment area. It's found on Tax Map 54, Parcels 22, 23, 25, and 25C. The Board will affirm or reverse findings made by the Planning Commission as to whether the general location or approximate location, character, and extent of the proposed utility scale solar facility are substantially in accord with the county's adopted comprehensive plan or part thereof in accordance with the Code of Virginia as amended. Specifically, this is found under section 15.2232 as a utility. The Board is making... Also responsible for making a determination as to approval or disapproval of the conditional use permit, which is a later and is subject to a public hearing. It's a later item on the agenda. Planning Commission did consider the case, and after public hearing on June 14th, the facilities of the Public Utilities and Public Service Corporations, including utility scale solar energy generation facilities, are subject to review by the Planning Commission under Code of Virginia 15.2232. In the aforementioned case, the applicant's proposal is not a feature presently shown on the county's comprehensive plan. Given such, after inviting public comment, the Planning Commission, upon motion duly made, made a determination or finding by four to three vote that the subject proposal, general location, or approximate location, and character and extent are not substantially in accord with the county's comprehensive plan. Specifically, the Commission found that general location of the proposal was not substantially in accord, as the properties are currently zoned A1 agricultural and are shown as agricultural rural lands in the future land use plan of the county's comprehensive plan, further noting that according to the soil classification provided by the applicant, that approximately 80% of the project land is designated as farmland of statewide importance. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to end there because this is a dual finding by the Planning Commission, but that there... That first part is the comprehensive plan finding, and that's what the applicant has filed an appeal to. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Staff did have a staff report, and that's posted under the use permit section. We do talk to both the comprehensive plan section, our use permit ordinance specifically for utility scale solar, as well as the policy in the staff analysis. Staff did find that the application is mostly compliant with the comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission found the opposite. The applicant has filed an appeal. Now it's up to the Board to make a final decision as far as whether it's considered substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan. Mr. Neiman with North Ridge Culpeper Solar is here to present his appeal finding, and that's the first step in reviewing that case tonight. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Sam. Any questions for Sam before we ask the applicant to come up? Okay, sir, would you like to come up and address the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, good evening. My name is Ken Neiman. I'm the President of North Ridge Resources. We are a utility scale solar developer located in Alexandria, Virginia. We are also the applicant for this conditional use permit. There are two people here with me tonight I'd like to briefly introduce. One is Ron Fig. Ron is my senior electrical engineer, 35 years with Virginia Power. And also Dave Kelsey. Dave represents the owners of the property, Sherwood Farm, and I know he's prepared to make a few comments tonight. I know the first order of business is the 2232 determination, and I'm prepared to talk to that. I wonder, however, if it makes sense for me to spend a few minutes reviewing the project as a whole, go through the characteristics and characters of the project, and then transition into the 2232. If you're okay with that, I'm happy to do that. It's your call.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Kimberly, could you go to the second presentation?
It's going to be on the second agenda. The one to A, label that A.
Six of one.
It's going to last a tad.
Six of one, A. Now I'm in control, all right. Okay, so what we are proposing is a 26-megawatt PV solar project. What does that mean, actually? When the project is running at full power, full rated power, it'll produce enough electricity for nearly 20,000 typical homes in Culpeper. However, over the course of a year, when you factor in when the sun isn't shining and other things, it'll produce enough power for about 4,500 typical homes. This project, unlike some of the other solar projects you've seen, will connect to Dominion's medium voltage distribution system, and all the power will feed back to the Culpeper substation in the town of Culpeper. That power will then be distributed locally to county homes and businesses. There are no new high voltage transmission lines required for this project, nor is there a new substation required. There is a portion of the existing distribution circuit on Route 3 that will need to be upgraded with wood poles, but all those costs will be borne by the project. The project is on four adjacent adjoining parcels. The site entrance is the fourth one. There's no solar on parcel 5425C. It's just the site entrance off of Route 3. As Sam mentioned, this project, the solar area is 252 acres, which is below the 300-acre threshold. The total boundary of the project is 355 acres. Included in that is 103 acres of environmental areas, buffers, property line setbacks. There's a Transco natural gas pipeline that cuts through the site, and there's also a private road. And the site was recently clear-cut timbered. Access to the site, both during operations and construction, will be limited to Route 3 only. And it probably goes without saying that in our... It's our position that the project, in fact, conforms with the comprehensive plan, as well as the solar ordinance and the utility scale solar policy. Here's a Google map of the site. 355 acres is in green. The red circle is a one-mile radius from the center of the site. You can see that there are a handful of residences to the south, down here. The Sherwood Farm resident is here. There's a residence here. There's a handful north. There's a kennel there. There's a greenhouse over here. The Salubria Mansion is about a mile and a quarter away. This is Batna Road over here, and the Greenwood Solar Project, which we'll talk about in a minute, is located in this area here. This is an aerial photograph of the site. This was taken in December. It's exactly as the site currently is with one exception. This area here has been timbered out, so that those pine trees are no longer there. The one thing I want to point out here is that if you look along the eastern boundary of the site, the northern boundary, the western boundary, and the southern boundary, you'll see that there's a substantial amount of existing timber. So there's a lot of natural buffering that still exists, to the extent that we have some thin areas, particularly over here in this area, we'll have to fill in with evergreens. But that's the current lay of the land right now. This is another picture, just looking from south, looking north. You can see the greenhouse, the bell nurseries to the north, and the rough approximate boundary of the site. So let me take a minute to talk about why we picked this particular site and some of the attributes that it has. The project is zoned A1 agricultural. Solar energy projects aren't allowed use, subject to a CUP. The site contains no prime farmland. It does contain lands of statewide importance, but there is no prime farmland on the site, and it is not within the Stevensburg Agricultural Forestal District. I mentioned the panel area is below the 300-acre limit. The electrical distribution system that we will tie into, including the Culpeper substation, per Virginia Power, can accept power from this site without any substantial modifications. The site is well screened by topography and existing timber and vegetation, with limited or no visibility from nearby residents, and no visibility from Route 3, Batna Road, Salubria Mansion, Hansbrough's Ridge, and the Culpeper Battlefield's State Park. It is not within a Civil War battlefield boundary area, including the Core Battlefield and Battlefield Study area. Based on our studies, there are no known historic, cultural, or architectural resources, and no listed threatened or endangered species, including the northern long-eared bat. And finally, the property owners considered this project the best use of this marginal land, which, and they'll speak to this later, I'm sure, will allow them to continue to actively farm the remaining 550 acres. The fact that we will also provide a decommissioning bond to the benefit of both the county and the landowners allows us to restore the site for future use. Quickly, this is a project area map. The only thing I really want to point out here is the area in yellow is the 252 acres of solar. The area in sort of the pink magenta to the north and south is 200-foot or 250-foot buffers. You can see, excuse me, there's some 100-year floodplain to the east as well as to the west. The natural gas pipeline cuts through the site right here. There's a couple of perennial streams that cut through the site. There is a private road, Mountain View Farm Road, that cuts through the site here. It also... This goes out to Batna Road and also is the access for the Greenwood Solar Project. The proposed site access is the existing Sherwood Farm Road up here off of Route 3. We'll have to build an access road back into the site, probably over here somewhere. I want to spend a few... Just a minute or two discussing view shed, because obviously a big issue. This is a photograph taken at the intersection of Carrico Mills Road and Route 3. This is looking basically southwest. The site is way in the distance where those arrows are beyond that tree line, so you will not be able to see the site from Route 3. Obviously, this picture was taken in the summer, but trust me, it looks exactly the same in the winter, because most of those trees are evergreen-type trees. This picture was taken at the... From the base of Hansbrough's Ridge at Route 3. I couldn't get up on the ridge, but the solar site is about a mile and a quarter in the distance. Again, you will not be able to see it from Hansbrough's Ridge. This picture was taken from the back boundary of Salubria. We did have permission to get on the site. The solar site is a little less than a mile to the southeast beyond that line of trees. Again, you won't see it from Salubria. And this is a picture taken from Batna Road. This is looking east from Batna Road. The one... The thing that I want to point out, two things. Our solar site is back in the distance beyond this far row of trees. You cannot see it from Batna Road. This area in the foreground is the area that will eventually presumably be Greenwood This is the existing entrance at Sherwood Farm. It's a good entrance. Carrico Mills Road is right across the street. You can see the trucks entering Route 3 from there. This is a picture looking west. I put this in there because you can see what a really significant, good line of sight that we have, both from the west as well as the east. So from a safety standpoint for traffic, this is pretty significant. This is the... How the distribution system will work out, what it will look like. The site is here. We'll have to build a 34.5 circuit on wooden poles from the site up to Route 3. We'll have to upgrade some of the circuit here on Route 3 with the existing poles, and then the power will feed back westerly into the Dominion Culpeper Substation here in the town of Culpeper, and then, of course, be distributed to the county locally. In terms of community outreach, we did have a community information meeting on January 4th. We had seven people attend. We went through the project in detail. Did not frankly hear any pushback from that meeting. We have met with most of the nearby neighbors to discuss the project. I did reach out to Citizens of Responsible Solar, the Piedmont Environmental Council, Friends of Culpeper Battlefields, and the Culpeper Alliance for Balanced Growth, and in some cases, actually was able to speak with some of those folks. Terms of economics, project of this size will cost... Have a capital cost of somewhere around $45 million to $50 million. There'll be a fairly substantial number of equivalent full-time jobs during construction and the resulting labor and economic outputs. Obviously, this project will produce lease revenues to the property owners, and there's fairly substantial, I think, increases in taxes and revenues to the county, but with no additional or very few, if any, additional county services. So let's talk about the numbers here. There's a one-time rollback tax involved. The real estate taxes will go up as a result in the change of use. That's a net increase. Assuming the county passes a revenue share ordinance, there'll be revenue share payments. In lieu of revenue share, there'll be the standard machinery and tools taxes. And we have also offered a siting agreement, which is on the agenda tonight if we get that far, assuming we get that far. The bottom line is, assuming the revenue share and assuming the siting agreement, in the first year, the revenues, net increase in revenues to the county is about $650,000, and over the 35-year life of the project, it's about $3.1 million. I know I've covered this, but I want to... Or some of these points, I want to mention a couple. We did provide a decommissioning cost as part of our application, a gross cost of $1.5 million. There'll be a surety to the county and the landowner for that, and that cost will be updated every three years by an independent engineer that ensures that as the cost to decommissioning changes over time, you have current, real-time numbers, and the surety bond will reflect those current numbers. We'll limit construction to Monday through Saturday only, 8:00 to 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. There'll be a security fence. There will be wildlife corridors established. We will maintain a 100-foot repairant buffer along perennial streams. We do not anticipate any blasting required based on our geotechnical evaluations. To the extent there is, and to the extent we cause any damages to nearby homes, we will cover the cost to repair them. We will utilize best management practices for erosion and sediment control and stormwater. We spent a substantial amount of time with the Planning Commission, addressing their concerns on that. We will follow the 100-acre disturbance phasing limit in the county ordinance. We will treat these panels as impervious surfaces. This has been a bit of a contentious issue, but we have agreed that we will treat the panels as impervious for stormwater and related calculations. We'll conduct groundwater testing on an annual basis, and our preliminary floodplain study confirmed that there would be no net rise to floodwaters downstream of the site. Let me address for a second what may be the elephant in the room, and that is Greenwood. I want to make a couple of points. Greenwood is separate and distinct from North Ridge. It's separate project ownership. We will interconnect into the local distribution system, not the transmission system. The two projects are separated by anywhere from 200 to 400 feet of setbacks and timber and vegetation. Our project is not visible even from Green... From the areas that Greenwood would be visible, and frankly, the only way you'll know the two projects are near each other is if you fly overhead. There have been concerns raised about erosion and stormwater management and construction traffic. Greenwood has notified the Kelseys that they intend to start construction of their project before April of 2024. They have an obligation under their PJM interconnection agreement to be operational by December of 2025. If you do the math, and I will say that our project, assuming we get that far, will not start construction before late 2025 or early 2026, just based on the amount of permitting and other things we have to do. So the bottom line there is, the two projects will not overlap during construction, so from an erosion control and traffic standpoint, I think that issue will not exist. And finally, the total Sherwood Farm property is about 950 acres. They are leasing 60 of their acres to Greenwood. They're leasing 355 to us. The remaining roughly 550 acres will remain in agricultural, continue to be used, and our position is it'll continue to provide a significant visual and agricultural benefit to Stevensburg. I'm getting close to wrapping it up, I promise. In terms of schedule, most of these activities have already occurred. Sam mentioned that we did have the second Planning Commission hearing on June 14th. The comp plan was denied, but the CUP was approved. We did file our notice of appeal, and of course, obviously, we're here tonight presenting the project to you. If the CUP is approved, the next thing we have to do is continue our environmental and related permits. I anticipate that work will take probably at least another year. That means a final site plan submittal probably mid to late 2025. Estimated construction start late '25, early '26, and then an estimated in-service date of sometime in mid... By mid or late 2026. So with that, I will wrap this portion. And if I could, transition into the 2232 discussion? Okay, great. Kimberly?
Yeah, the first one. There we go. Thank you. If I could, I'd like to read the motion that was provided at the Planning Commission hearing, that the Planning Commission ultimately voted on. Case number U2236 is not in substantial accord with section 15.22232 of the comprehensive plan specifically regarding the general location, as it is zoned A1 and is shown as agricultural and rural in the future land use, and according to the soil classifications that were provided, 80.4% of that land is either prime farmland or farmland of statewide importance. That was the motion that was voted on by the Planning Commission. We believe they erred in that determination, and I'd like to go through my rationale for that if I could. As you all know, a project like this in A1 isn't allowed use, subject to a conditional use approval... Permit approved by the Board of Supervisors. We do not believe this project... We do not believe this project will impact the rural character of the area. The project was recently clear-cut, is very isolated, and with no visibility from public roads, parks, and adjacent residential structures. It's heavily buffered with existing trees and vegetation, and required setbacks and additional vegetative buffer will ensure its isolation. The county policy discourages the use of prime farmland and encourages lower agricultural value land. This site, again, contains no prime farmland, and most of the land is of lower value blackjack soil used to grow timber. Also, by the way, there is no mention of farmlands of statewide importance in the Comprehensive Plan, nor the solar policy. And the Sherwood Farm owners consider solar a better use of this marginal land as compared to growing timber. The land not included in the project will continue to be used as productive farmland. When the project is decommissioned, the project area will be restored and can be returned to its original agricultural use. And finally, I'd like to go through the items in the Comprehensive Plan itself that talks specifically about the guidelines for utility-scale solar projects. There is a target, if you will, of 2,400 acres. This project, 252, stays below the 2,400-acre limit, be at most a half a mile from existing electrical transmission corridors. This project, as I said, will connect to the distribution system, which is only 3/10 of a mile away, and there are no new transmission lines nor substation required. It should be on either a single parcel or group parcels. Ours are adjacent parcels, as required. Should co-locate with nature, creating pollinator gardens and having native plantings. We have indicated that we will utilize native grasses for our vegetative cover, and that we will attempt to follow the Virginia Pollinator Smart Program, which was implemented by the DEQ two or three years ago. We will provide a decommissioning plan for the gross cost, and as I mentioned, that'll be updated every three years. Should employ conservation easements in agricultural rural areas. Again, when decommissioned, this site can be restored and the land returned to its original agricultural use. Utilize property line setbacks of at least 200 feet. We will use, will utilize 200 feet, and in areas that are adjacent to the Stevensburg Agricultural and Forestal District, will increase that to 250 feet. And finally, again, no new substation, no new substantial infrastructure required. The interconnection will be on the site and invisible from any adjacent properties. And so in closing, we do believe this project, the location, character, and extent is substantially in accord with 20, the 23 Comprehensive Plan, will not adversely affect the health or safety of persons residing or working in the neighborhood, and will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to property or improvements in the area. So with that, I will close and obviously entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Neiman. Questions for Mr. Neiman? Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Opening up for discussion?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I move that this board sustains the determination by the Planning Commission on June 14th, 2023, which states the application was not in compliance with the Culpaper County Comprehensive Plan pursuant to Virginia Code Section 15.2-2232, and further move that the appeal is denied and the board finds the proposed utility-scale solar generation facility to be located upon Tax Map 54 Parcels 22, 23, 25, and 25C, not in substantially accord with the adopted Comprehensive Plan or part thereof.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, briefly, and I was hoping to avoid it, but I apologize. I believe, I mean, I just listened to the presentation. The Planning Commission did approve the project after finding it not in accord with the Comprehensive Plan, which is a first for me. But from that, I mean, looking at the data and the information, I don't understand how it isn't in keeping with the Comprehensive Plan. Not saying that I support it, but I'm seriously saying I don't see how it's not in keeping with the Comprehensive Plan.
Mr. Chairman, if I can respond to that. Mr. Kelsey and Mr. Neiman were nice enough to invite me down to do a tour of that site. Some of the things that really concern me, first off, when we talk about the solar sprawl that, as Mr. Neiman has pointed out, when you fly over that site, we are taking 1,000 acres and now 1,300. Secondly, when we look at our solar policy, when we look at productive farmland, during that site visit, that site is surrounded by corn fields and soybean fields, and good-looking corn and soybeans. I mean, it is actually being farmed. And that being said, I have, I'm anxious to say it's not, it is, it is not in compliance with the Comprehensive Plan, because we are taking productive farmland out and putting solar panels on it. But those two there, that is, that is my biggest concern when we're, land that is being cropped, and we have, I think it's some 20 acres that were being used as pasture land for cattle. So that is productive land, and it is being used as farmland.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Okay. I believe it's six to one in favor of the motion, Ms. Ellis. Mr. Underwood was not in favor.
Mr. Chairman, may I have a question?
Yes, sir.
Well, obviously, I'm disappointed, but in light of the vote, I would ask that my application be withdrawn at this point.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so with the application being withdrawn, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, but I don't think we have to have the public hearings, and we can go from 601A and 601B. We can skip over that and go into 602?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That would be my understanding. The application is no longer active. It's been withdrawn, and there's no action for the board to take.
Okay. Moving on to 602, 6.02 on the agenda. Proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, and I'll go ahead and turn this over to Sam.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have one other advertised business, and this is an amendment to the zoning ordinance. The board will consider a revision, a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance. The board will consider a revision to Appendix A of the County Code. The proposed revision is specifically to Article 7.11A, the Light Industrial Zoning District. It's specifically 7.1A-9, which is your building height limit in that Light Industrial Zoning District. The current Light Industrial maximum height limit is 45 feet. The board will consider a max height limit amendment to 75 feet in the Light Industrial Zoning District specifically and only for structures that are a qualified technology business, that are located within a technology zone as defined in Chapter 12, Article 16, Technology Zones of the County Code. This increase in height will allow for better utilization of the existing industrial zoning districts, and is supported by planning efforts to direct and encourage industrial inquiries to locate their businesses and projects on property that has been previously zoned and planned for industrial. The board will determine whether the proposed ordinance amendment is required to serve the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices as found in the Code of Virginia, Section 15.2, 2283, 2285, and 2286. And, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any fancy presentations for this. There's no fancy maps to put on the screen. It is a zoning text amendment, but what is posted on board docs, board docs is specifically what I read would be a very minimal code change, but does potentially change the height limit from 45 to 75, only in the Light Industrial, because our heavy industrial already allows for that 75 feet. But then, after further discussion and consideration, this current text amendment would qualify and be only allowed as an exception for those businesses that meet the definition of a qualified technology business in our tech zones. So it is different than what the board had previously discussed and had a public hearing on. The board has authorized, and we have advertised properly for a public hearing tonight. I'm happy to entertain any questions, but this is a narrowed scope for that increase in height from 45 to 75.
Seems to me we may have had some legal advice that helped us clarify so that we're okay with what we're doing.
Yes, and there has been some amendments, and those have been posted as well. Thank you, Chief Ross.
I am grateful for that, and that's why I asked the questions a while ago. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Sam before we open the public hearing? Okay. This issue requires a public hearing. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing now for anyone that would like to come and
Good evening, board. My name is DC Campbell, and I live in the Stevensburg District.
There you go. I don't have prepared notes. I was working on the other topic. However, I just would like to remind you that the towers that are at CarGill or Horizon or whatever the name of the company is there that ships all the flour to Baltimore, I follow the trucks when I go back home, or further from there. But anyway, they're 100 feet tall, some are over that, and some are rounder, and I don't have those figures with me tonight. And I just think raising the limit is the height, and I'm conscious of height, that it's just too much to go up that high. It sets a precedent, especially on the hills that are over there in the technology zone. Appreciate you listening. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to come and speak?
It does work. I am so shook up by the vote just now. I had to just drop the mic. I wanted to, Don hates Stevensburg. I wanted to take this opportunity in a public forum to thank each and every one of you who voted to deny this project tonight. That shows us that you can listen to the citizens. And, you know, I, amongst other people, hold people's feet to the fire when they're wrong. But I also make sure that I pat them on the back when they do something right. And I have been looking for an opportunity to pat each and one, each and every one of you on the back, and tonight, I am taking that opportunity to do so. And I want to thank you once again for finally listening to the Culpaper County residents in doing what is right. It is our county, and it's your job.
Mr. Neiman, I hate to interrupt you, and we appreciate what you're saying, but we're on a different issue right now, so gotta move along, okay?
Thank you, Chairman Deal, and hope each and every one of you have a safe drive home.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Does anybody else who would like to come and speak on this issue? Okay. Seeing none, going ahead and close the public hearing, and opening up for discussion or
I want to thank staff and everybody for the work that they put into making this very specific in the goals that we wanted to obtain by getting our technology zones to the point of that they can grow up slightly instead of out, the less amount of acreage we need to dedicate to data centers to get the most bang for our buck. In my eyes, is a good goal to have, as well as leaning towards what the town already allows at the 70-foot. I believe that this is a good compromise. So I would like to move to approve the amendment to the zoning ordinance, TZA-9-23-1.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Real quick.
Yes.
I want to thank everyone also, and I want to thank, I appreciate your comments and that, and I'm sorry you were cut short.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. Okay. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We're adjourned.